September 28th campaign. We call the word please stand with the president of the citizens and moments of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda will be approval of minutes from the September the 14th campaign.
Make motion to approve the minutes from September 14th campaign.
Sorry, I was just going to mention in the comments at the end, I should have been able to exact this, I had asked if we could honor Patriots' Day every year as part of our calendar.
I'll get those added to the summary.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt there.
Please call roll.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stipes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of the statement of bill paid amount sixty three thousand three hundred and sixty-four seventy-seven.
I'll be the one that like, that's a low number.
Yeah, where's that?
I want to go on record as requiring or requesting approval of the statement of bills for sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents between the first time and the long time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the statement of bills paid. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stipes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be request of comments from the public. Please step to the podium, state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Calvo. My address is thirty-six eight thirty State Lineville, previous eighty-nine hundred metropolitan.
Can I say something real quick because I can't, I can't hear it. Is that microphone on?
It's still, it's not functioning now, I'm sorry.
Okay, maybe it was, just go ahead and remove your mask so we don't get that. There you go, thank you, sorry about that.
The reason I'm here is I lived here for thirty years, got stopped very few times. In the last year and a half, I've been stopped seven or eight times. The last time I got stopped was on my seventy-two birthday. Supposedly I failed to make it, used a turn signal at ninety-fourth and C-32. I was halfway down thirty-two to ninety-fourth Street, went into the gas station, officer come up and asked, said, you know when I pulled you over? I said, no. She said, you failed to give a turn signal at ninety-fourth Street. She wanted my insurance and my driver's license and I gave her two. My insurance was expired, I said, she said, it's expired. I said, I have another one in the drop box. She said, well, while you're looking for it, I'm going to go back and run your license to see if you got insurance. She came back, she said, I wrote you three tickets. I said, here's my insurance, I don't have to look at it, you can give it to me when I ask for it. Therefore, I got three tickets. I've been stopped for muddy license plate, deteriorating license plate that the county gave me and I laughed at the guy and he gave it to me, said, that ain't gonna work out on the arm. She said, well, if you done it, I might get another one. You know, I think I have the right to complain. I've been stopped for because anything, dirty license plate, this, that. I've lived here for thirty-some years and I haven't been stopped like that before, but it's the deal, you know? Nobody want to comment?
You don't comment?
No, okay.
The staff does?
Well, Mayor, I would say that if the gentleman liked to get with Chief of Thieves, I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss about it. We don't have anything.
Yeah, we don't implore that.
But Chief of Thieves here would be happy and true to the need if you haven't had a chance to talk to him, discuss those cases, that would be a part of the first place to start.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come to the podium, state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Margaret Moore. My dwelling is four zero four D River Falls Road, Edwardsville, Kansas, six six one one one. My mailing address is seven 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 Alcat, Long Springs, Kansas, six six zero one two, which is also my driver's license. This is about consent agenda? I don't know if I'm supposed to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have no consent agenda.
Okay, well, this is actually about consent. It's, it says, local laws regarding emergency consent of minors and a patient's right to refuse treatment should be explicitly understood. Local law officers are an excellent source of precise information concerning the subject matter. Read the law, do not rely on the word of mouth. This concerns minors, children under the age of eighteen with local law enforcement or any other adult other than the parent or legal guardian. If a person has a minor and lives here in the city of Edwardsville, and does a police officer have the right to talk to them without their consent and ask them questions?
That is not for us to answer. The chief can answer this.
And answers this.
Do you, is there a law that I could read about that? If they come into my home, knock on my door, and it has nothing to do, it has something to do with the neighbors, then they start questioning my son?
Well, I would, I would suggest that, sorry, Mayor, that you could certainly come talk to me in my office.
Okay.
And I can give you any legal advice, but I could surely direct you in the right direction where you might be able to get some information and we can talk about that particular case. As you introduced, we're talking about minors and I prefer not to do that here.
I don't either because, I mean, it's just, I myself as a mother, okay, as a single mother, I'm doing my very best to make sure that my child was raised right. Before the COVID hit, I was working for a job seven days a week, okay? The only day off I had is when I didn't have to go get my second job for my first job, okay? And I sent my son to State Department Catholic School, cost almost four grand a year, and this is coming out of my pocket. I'm not on welfare, I'm not on food stamps, I don't get subsidized, subsidized housing or Section Eight or any of that. You know, I pay for everything out of my pocket and it's hard, I'm fifty-two. I mean, I'm struggling, but I'm doing it, you know? I want to make sure my kid's raised right, I want my girl to be a boss, not a worker. Does that make sense? And I know once high school hits, it's going to be ten grand to send to the city, and I know I'm not supposed to be talking about minors, but when there's concerns, I live in an apartment and I know it's apartment life, but, you know, you can't choose your neighbors, you really can't. But I don't need police officers to put me in class with my neighbors. Does that make sense? I'm going to get my son involved.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief, how are you all doing?
Just come down to the office, I'm there at eight five.
Eight five?
Yeah, you can come any time.
I'll come Wednesday because I have work tomorrow. One o'clock?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. There are no other items. We have all item number four, consider the recommendation of approval of planning commissioner Garty and education for his own property, one oh six twenty-five, one oh six thirty-five Paul Drive, and adopt ordinance number ten thirty-one, finalizing the same. Hold it.
Well, Mayor, under public comments, I just would like to say, are you ready for some football? Oh, I'm sorry. Apparently, apparently there's a game tonight, so, just a reminder about it, I'm sure everybody already noticed that. So, on this particular item, on this rezoning, as you know, this was before you met your last meeting, the council, after some discussions, asked if this item tabled. We did, Mr. Mopkin and I met with the applicants representative a couple of days later, and at that time, they elected to withdraw their application. And so that application is no longer coming forward to the council, but because you had tabled it and you kind of closed the loop, we wanted to bring that back to the council and tell you that, in fact, that the, that that particular person has withdrawn that application, they have indicated that they may revise a site plan and provide another option that doesn't require rezoning, but as of today, we have received that. So, really just to close the loop, since it was an item, okay, public and in the comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is consider the following items related to the issuance of general obligation bonds series twenty twenty of the state of Edwardsville, Kansas.
Mayor, I'm going to start.
Do you want me to read the?
No.
Very good, I didn't think so.
So, here's the way we'll take it tonight, I'm going to let Hank Kelly, who's with Mike R. Sandler, who's the financial advisors on this, give you a quick update on the bids, how those went, and then following that, we have two action items, which is the ordinance and resolution. We did not reprint all the ordinances and resolutions, as you know, there's a lot of pages, so I'm just going to quickly highlight a couple of changes that just happen when you go through this same process. So, with that, I will turn over.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I'll make a brief for the Tuesday game. But, so we had a sale today in regards to various projects for about two point five million dollars. We received bids from nine banks at eleven o'clock this morning. The winning bid came in at one point three nine percent. All nine bids were within zero point three percent, just to kind of put that into perspective of how hungry banks are right now for bond yield and what they're bidding, to kind of put that into also a little bit of perspective of what we've received in the past for the city. In twenty nineteen, we issued three point, about three point seven million dollars, twenty year financing, so it's same, similar length to this one, and achieved a two point seven percent. So, that's how much rates have dropped just in the last year. With that, as I said, tonight, in front of you, it's just an ordinance and a resolution which essentially approves and awards those, the bid to the winning bidder, Robert Baird. The bid today went really smoothly and a great result for the city. Do you guys have any questions? Yes, it's, it's pretty incredible what we've seen the last couple of weeks, so, really exciting time to be issuing debt and pardon, I keep saying rates won't keep going any lower, I think I said that in twenty nineteen, but look where we're at now, so you never know.
I think it's a great thing that we've had nine, nine people take a look at it from that interest, that's, that's great. And I'd really like to be able to borrow at that number.
Yeah, and I'll just add one more thing to that, I mean, that is a testament to everything that Mike does in the background, and Zach and Sean, and just their, when, a lot, a big part of that is having a good ratings in the cities, double A minus rating, which when we, before we bid out anything, we go through a rating process and there's a lot of questions that they have to answer for the rating you receive, and so that, that plays a big part into the, how many bids that you receive and how many, how much interest you get from these banks, so, that testament to them as well on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just one other thing I would just note in a comment to these two items, so, we originally issued, at least in the bid, two million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. When we received these bids, similar to the ones we received last time, there was a premium of a little over ninety thousand dollars. So, in the past, last year, we took the premium and we put it into the various projects that we have, but in this case, because the only project is the Riverview Crossroads project, we were able to basically take that ninety-some odd thousand dollars and reduce how much we're borrowing to the two million four seventy-five and still put the same amount of money into the project fund. So, we basically took those savings and, and reduced how much we're borrowing. So, it kind of depends on the time whether or not we do that each time, but in this case, it didn't necessarily make sense to put more money into that project than it appears unless something changes in, in all the estimates we've gotten, unless something changes drastically, we should have sufficient funding to complete the project. With that, the first item that you have before you is the ordinance. The ordinance is a fairly small document, only five pages, just note three general changes, none of which is substantial. Obviously, the first one is the amount is two million four seventy-five, so in any place you see in parentheses, two million five seventy-five, that's a change. The third whereas has been stricken. So, this, this ordinance, we kind of caught it late, was from our last time we borrowed money, so it had some language in there about increasing sums, and so, that third whereas has no value, so we took it out. And then on the fourth whereas, there was a statement that says amended by this ordinance, there's no amendment by this ordinance, so that was struck. So, generally, the ordinance is, all the meat of the ordinance is unchanged except for the value number, and we recommend you approve that. This is basically the document that says you're accepting the bids and will, you know, distribute, you know, receive the funds, accept the bid and receive the funds, so that's the first.
Should the numbers be changed in all of the places that have numbers in the document?
Yes, yes, so it's in several, the whereas is, it's in section two, under the authorization of and security for the bonds, it's under the definition of the bonds, and that's it.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we adopt ordinance number ten thirty-two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of two million four hundred and seventy-five thousand principal amount of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty, the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, providing for the leviation and collection of the annual tax, tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on bonds as they become due, authorizing such bonds to be issued to pay the cost of certain improvements. Second. I'm not going to repeat all that. Thank you. But thank you for the motion. It has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number ten thirty-two, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stipes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
The second item is resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen. This is basically the one that prescribes the form and details of authorizing that delivery. This is the one where basically it authorizes the various parties, you have to sign a lot of documents, being the mayor, myself, Sean, and Zach. Again, anywhere in that, since it was forty pages long, we didn't figure you needed to get forty more pages of stuff, we're happy to provide you a full clean copy, but, you know, again, the big changes are really the numbers that's plugged in. So, the change again is from two million five seventy-five to two million four seventy-five. I would note for you a couple of changes, again, not material changes, but just want to make sure everybody's out there. Under section two point oh nine, on page ten of the document, that section, it talks about the delivery of the bonds, and as part of the delivery of the bonds, they have to make a deposit, in this case, fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The deposit is actually due at one P.M. today, but it didn't clear our bank until one thirty-nine. It's not, you know, it just, it's one of those things, they made it, they made the wire trades, we just didn't clear our bank until one thirty-nine. So, the attorney just added a caveat that we're waiving the provision that the deposit be right at one o'clock. We still got the deposit, or we actually did, so, if they hadn't made the deposit, we wouldn't be here tonight, our commending that to be approved. The other.
What numbers are that?
Section, it's, it's.
Three point oh.
He added to section two point oh nine.
Added to.
Yes, so at the end of all of that there, it now says, the city hereby waives the requirement that the good trade deposit for the bonds be received by the city by one P.M. on the sale date, and acknowledges that such deposit was received by the city prior to the acceptance of the bid of the original purchaser.
Thank you.
We got the deposit, all's good. The other section, it's really a new section, twelve, would be twelve point oh three, so it adds a section with the numbers. I'm not going to read all this to you, but what it says is that these are tax exempt bonds, and that you as a council and us as staff are saying that we do not anticipate issuing more than ten million dollars in tax exempt bonds in twenty twenty. I can almost certainly tell you that we will not be issuing another seven point five million dollars of bonds in the next sixty, seventy days, so I think it's reasonable to say that. It is typical language that we use even when we do these purchases, so, if we exceed ten million dollars in a year, as you all recall, we had that hicked up with the tip bonds, then you have to get a separate bond opinion saying that it's still at, we're tax exempt purposes, that it's a tax exempt note, it's really a legal provision, so, tighter added that in this particular document. And then really, the last thing is in exhibit B, there's lots of blanks in there about term bonds and when the bonds are due and all that. That's just all being completed off the bond sale that the bond attorney and the financial advisor provides, so, I'm not going to go through all of those because really, it's mainly the fill in the blank. We know that the purchaser, Robert Duncan Baird and Company, you know, by term bonds, that means if you have some bonds, starting in twenty thirty-two, I believe it is, that are callable, so typically, bonds have an eight to ten year call on them, so that's the way these are set up, so, eight to twelve, I should say, I think this one was twelve, so in twelve years from now, you can call these bonds, so, if for some reason, either one, you just have a lot of cash and you want to pay them off, or two, if interest rates drop below one point three nine seven seven percent, you can refinance them, so I don't expect a matter of those two things to happen. But if it does in twelve years from now, and you really think you're going to save a lot of money, then, then we can do that, but I seriously doubt that. That's really the only changes in the resolution. Obviously, clean copies will be available for the matter of execute, so our recommendation would be approve the resolution with the amendments noted.
Mayor, make the motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty twelve, resolution prescribing the form and details of authorizing the delivery of two million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars principal amount of general obligation bond series twenty of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance of the city. Do we need to designate the award winner in this company?
I don't.
No.
No, I don't want to say.
Clarification, twenty twenty thirteen is the resolution, I believe, the twenty twelve.
Well, on the, on the sheet it says twenty twelve and on here it says twenty.
Twenty twenty dash thirteen.
It's twenty twenty dash thirteen.
That's what I was going to ask about whether that, which one, which number you want. Correction to resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen. Okay. Second. It has been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, prescribing the form and detail of the authorize, and authorizing the delivery of general obligation bond series twenty twenty. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stipes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we consider authorizing the city manager to initiate the task order with BAC Roads conceptual and preliminary design services for Ninety-Eighth Street.
Just a little bit of follow-up on this, you know, we've had several discussions about streets in general, and Ninety-Eighth Street in particular, especially during our most recent budget discussions, and so we have been in discussions with BAC Roads, who serves as our city engineer, about looking at, basically looking at the entire corridor of Ninety-Eighth Street, so from K-32 to the north city limits, really to do some preliminary survey and engineering, finding out what the problem areas are, how to address the problem areas, those types of things. Typically, we would enter into a full contract with BAC when we were reconstructing the road, so like when we did Riverview, we knew we were going to reconstruct the road. We had a project, STP project, that intended to rebuild a portion of Ninety-Eighth Street. So, if that goes forward, then we would enter into a full contract. But we maintain a contract with BAC Roads, so it's called an on-call contract, which means we can call them and they'll do work for us, and when it's more than some simple item, we generally do a task order, so we spell out what those tasks are for the price. So, that's what we really have, I didn't put the whole task order in here, but really, look at the road, you know, what are our challenges, I mean, some of them we know, right? But we need to get survey information, we need to know what the ownership is, what kind of right of ways we have out there, what kind of fixes we can do, short term, long term, so it's really a matter of studying that whole corridor and, and move forward with this task order. We really, go ahead, I was going to say, we anticipate sixty to seventy-five thousand, but this is the topic.
Now, real only real question I have is when you say Ninety-Eighth Street, we know that it runs the full length of our city, or does that study the full length of our city?
Yes.
Okay.
From, well, K-32.
Okay, so not south of K-32?
No, we wouldn't look at it south, because we weren't paying, because that's in the industrial area, and I think we're in good shape with that, so.
And this, you don't need a motion for this, this is just kind of a general consensus?
Well, I, I think we brought it forward for a motion just because of the amount of money, because it's over, you know, typically, if it was ten thousand or under, we wouldn't worry, but, but we don't really go out to bid on this, so, that's it. We do have money in the bond funds, so this, out of twenty nineteen, we have budgeted to spend money, we just had it more narrowly focused, so we're taking the broader focus on it, so, that's, that's really, I will say one other benefit, by doing this work with them and doing what they call less than preliminary engineering, so, right, we can, the, the Mark needs projects that they use to match for federal funds when they're doing studies, and so we can take and call this one of those Mark study projects, and in the future, when we have fees that maybe do, we can apply this to those future fees. So, there's a benefit to us also working with the Mid-America Regional Group in this project, so, parts of this will become kind of part of Mid-America Regional Group's planning efforts, but they don't really have any part into it other than they use it as a match for head of a federal fund.
I know Ninety-Eighth Street's one of the top priority streets or worse streets. How does it line up in our chart? Is that the best, when we had the study done with all the different streets, is that probably the best fit?
Part of what we're going to use this for is to, to address our broader capital improvement program, so one of the pieces in this will be different road type constructions, so, right, so if this road is, let's say, we refer to this as a collector road, it's probably, I would judge it as a collector road, but is it an urban section, a rural section, and what does that look like? So, some of this, we're going to use for the bigger, broader spectrum of answering the questions of, how do we want roads to look? Because what I've heard several times is, well, we don't need curb and gutters, we just, we want a rural section, but what does that take, how much will that take, et cetera, so as far as.
I might have mis, I might have misphrased the question.
No.
I was just wondering, in the.
In the patient study.
In the PACER study, yeah, is this the, the best fit, is Ninety-Eighth Street the good best target for that?
And I don't remember the exact, Ninety-Eighth Street, depending on the section, it's probably middle of the road, so it's a, parts of it are probably, you know, sixes and parts of it are probably threes and fours. I mean.
And if I remember right, the six was right where we needed to take pretty quick action.
Yeah, but when you're in, when you're in that, when you're in that, I'm going to say five, six, seven range, those are the roads that you really want to be focusing maintenance, big maintenance on, right, so beyond just maybe a crack seal or something. Those seven, eights, nines, those are the ones where we want to try to be making sure we get as much life, they're generally fairly new, Kansas Avenue, and I think there was a question, why would you crack seal Kansas Avenue, it's only two or three years old? Well, that's where, that's the best time to do it while it's still new and get ahead of it, so.
Do you think it might be possible when we have, maybe another night when we have a short agenda, and not add it to a really long one, but just review that case or study?
Yes.
So, we can see where everything is.
We're going to bring that, we're actually bringing that to you, remember the last meeting, kind of broke out some ninety, you know, thirty, ninety, and part of that was this piece, right? We're already going through the PACER data that we have, we're already putting together a capital, I'm going to call it a capital improvement program for streets, so, we're not focusing, while this is focusing on a specific section, information from this is really valuable for some of our, for our policymaking. is really valuable for some of our, for our policymaking. You know, what kind of roads do you, one street, so 98th Street, a portion of it could be an urbanized section, and a portion of it could be more of a rural section, right? Depending on where you're at, number of houses, what's the traffic, you know, is there a future development coming, those types of things. So that's what we are bringing forward to you, probably it'd be over the next 60 days, and it may be a piece of, but at the end of that, by early next year, we want to have to do basically a complete capital improvement plan for streets. So collectively, you can look and say, okay, here's how we're valuing streets, these are the types of cross-sections we want, here's the things we've got to do for a federal highway. So for example, 98th Street is considered a minor collector in the federal highway system. We might classify it as something else. Why is it important how it's classified in the federal highway system? If it's not classified as a minor collector or better, you don't get federal money. Now, you may say, I don't want the federal money. That's a policy decision. So I, this will help clarify, I think, a lot of that, why it's focused on one street. 98th Street isn't all that different from 102nd Street, from 94th Street, from 102nd Street, as far as the style of the street, the issues in the street. And we're not going to come back in and say, here's the plan to rebuild the street. We will come back and say, well, here's the issues, here's the items, here's the cost, you know, general cost opinion, here's how we would like to break this out into a project. You've got three miles of road, you're likely not going to be building two and a half, three miles of road in one project. Most likely not, not saying you can. Again, policy decision, so.
I make a motion to authorize city manager to initiate task order with BAC Roads for the conceptual and preliminary design for 98th Street.
Second.
It is been moved as a second to authorize the city manager to initiate task order with BAC Roads for conceptual and preliminary design services for 98th Street. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malott?
Yes.
Schreger?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Okay, juror on this one, is that her back?
Yes, sir. It should be...
Regarding 2021 request for proposals of solid waste recycling service.
I'm hitting up now the summary of the community survey we did for solid waste. I saw that pretty briefly, but... So about a week and a half ago, the cities received four bids for the request proposal, or RFP process for our 2021 solid waste contract, the agencies which respond to Honey Creek disposal, Casey disposal, Republic Services, and Waste Management. Now, we're still reviewing all of the responses that came in, but we did want to provide this update, as well as the results of the community survey, just to give you guys a little bit of an update on our decision-making process, what we were looking for from the companies providing the bids, and ask for your input and guidance as we continue this review. So when we put the bids out, we essentially wanted a kind of an out-of-car type option, where we could pick and choose different service levels, that would largely be dictated by the feedback we got from the community survey, as well as the elected officials and what you all are here in terms of constituents. Essentially, the base level of service, weekly trash service at every address, obviously that is something that needs to be done. And then different options for, do we do weekly recycling? Do we do every other week recycling? How do we handle bulky item pickup? Do we do a monthly, monthly bulky item pickups? Do we do a quarterly bulky item pickup? Do we do a combination of regular pickups and our citywide cleanup? So really, we wanted to get a wide range of options, so that way we can package something and bring it to you, so we can find something that fits within the budget, and is actually a service at a level that our residents expect and should be delivered. We also structured it to where we received bids that accounted for an estimated 1,100 address count and then a 1,600 address count, that 500 address difference being the mobile home park. We've been in dialogue with the regional management of Mobile Home Park, and they surprisingly seem a lot more amenable to being added to the citywide contract than I would have expected, having done this about a month and a half ago, so that's good news. So all that to say, the highlights from the community survey were that, really generally speaking, folks seem to like the service that we've got now. Most people use recycling every single week. Most of the responses came back either somewhat satisfied or very satisfied, as far as the level of service. When we asked what their preference for bulky item pickup was, the split was pretty much 50/50, continue with the annual citywide cleanup, or do some kind of pre-scheduled curbside service. In the bids, we asked for numbers on, assuming that we would continue that event, and we, right now, we fully plan on continuing that event in the spring, it's just a matter of, do we augment that with additional scheduled curbside bulky item pickup? And at least from the community's perspective, from the 70-odd people who responded to the survey, you know, they, it really can go either way, they just want to make sure that it's, has some role in our service, bulky item pickup. That was the number one. When we asked them to rank what they would add to the service, curbside bulky item pickup was, once they weighted all the scores, that rose to the top. We asked about customer complaints, if they were to miss pickup. Most people who responded, 37 of the 67 who responded said that they had not done that. We tend to get, what we, what we ask folks to do, if they're having trouble with waste management and the customer service line, we have just been telling people, just contact City Hall, we can get you an acute bath there to get your issues corrected, you know, in a more timely manner than working through that way. Most people have not called to schedule a bulky item pickup, so I think people are used to doing the citywide pickup, so if we were to change it up or to add services, there might be a little bit of learning curve related to that. And as it relates to the Mobile Home Village, most of the people who responded actually did not live in the Mobile Home Village, which is understandable, because they didn't take part in the survey, it's a service that they're currently involved in. Also included, all of the comments that people provided as far as the narrative, so that's something for you to review. Again, we are expecting to bring back staff recommendations on October 12. In between now and then, what city staff is going to be doing is, we're going to be narrowing it down to one or two options, and have some, kind of nail down some more detailed information on, on, once we get it packaged together, what we think we would like, what are the nuances and the variables built in there, so that way, when we come back on the 12, we'll be able to present you as complete a package as possible, before we kind of go into that final contract mode. So with that, we've got about another two weeks of review left before you see any formal recommendations, but just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at in that process. So if you have questions?
Are any of the four in Wyandotte County?
Casey disposal is.
Casey disposal.
Casey disposal, they're actually in Edwardville, and I believe that is the only one, waste management, I just managed, maintained.
Yeah, I did do what they said they were going to do, picking up trash on 435, so.
All right. I think the one thing on the comments that I would just say, I think what you see, if you look through all those comments, it is, some of its communications, that is, that are like, well, I need, I want to be able to put out, I need an extra, I want an extra container, or I want to put out extra garbage, or I want to do these things. And all of those things are possible now, or senior, they're a senior and they can't get the container. So if part of it is a matter of how do we make sure we get that information out there? So there are services that are already available, but they're not, they're not aware that the services are there. So I think if there's probably anything, and then the other is, there are quite a few people that seem to be, you know, satisfied overall with the services, so I don't see a change in the heights of service that we provide. It's really how do we want to nuance it, and where does the price, what is the price point?
It's a given, we will do weekly trash pickup, it's a given, we will have some level of recycling, whether that's weekly or bi-weekly, or 65 gallon or 95 gallons. People are using it, which is good. Edwardville's got an 18% diversion rate for the landfill, which is more than double any of the other communities in Wyandotte County, which is, that's a nice little badge of honor that I would, I'd like to keep forward with. Also, we asked that firms provide some general pricing for commercial, and if that would affect any rates on the whole, if that were to be included, to include that information, so that information's more related to that. And we jumped through all the state poll loops to be able to launch that service, if that's something that we can afford and move forward with. But I think by, we tried to be as comprehensive as we can and have as much outreach as we can, or related to this item, and October 12 will be back a little bit.
Is the survey still open?
The survey closed at the end of last week. We can reopen it if that's something that we would like to.
Looks like we had somewhere on 65, 70.
Between all told, we had 67, not all 67 answered every single question, but 67 responded to the poll we got.
Any thoughts on, pleased with the number of responses?
I think if we held a in-person community forum, and 70 people comes and spoke at it, I think we would be pretty pleased with that level of turnout, so.
I would say, other times when we've done surveys like this, that's about, probably the thing, we had the biggest turnout was when we did the Ford Street, when we did the video clips, and people could comment. That was probably the one thing where we had a couple hundred respond. But I would say, generally speaking, this seems about in that response rate, that we probably like more, but it seems to be about there.
Okay, there's no other questions, I will let you go.
Thank you, man.
Okay, advisory boards, Mike?
The only item I have, unless you all have any questions, the COVID testing from last week that we did, sorry, we did on Thursday, Friday, we had about 75 people attend that, and I'm happy to say that all were negative, so every test was negative. Now, what we're still going to get is more statistical data, right? So men and women, where they're residents, non-residents, age, some of the, you know, general demographics, obviously, they can't tell us, you know, person outcomes, but I think that's good. I mean, it's good that we didn't have any positives, and a number of staff members took that as well, and some council members took it, so. I think it was good that we held that in that, to help get more data. And I have nothing else, man.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I took it, Zach?
Three quick items, one that just popped up. The MARK public comment period for online is open now, so if you can, we'll shoot that link out to you, we've been trying to push it out on social media. That's the website that MARK maintains, so the more public comments we get in support of our project, our SEP project that we submitted for, the better chance that we'll have a good score. The two projects out there are 98th Street, and then expansion of kind of the trail of walkability section through town, so if you can, if you can help us get the word out about that, that would be helpful. October 1st, the Chamber is going to be hosting a online lunch and learn with Deputy Commerce Secretary Bill Murphy. We're going to be just kind of talking through some of the different state programs out there, that can help small businesses, updates on care funding, things like that. And then I do just want to give a quick kudos to our parsing rep supervisor, Mike Barton. He had the idea to launch his community scavenger hunt a couple of weeks ago, and we put it out, I think I mentioned it a few weeks ago, and it's been pretty popular, at least as far as the online feedback has been very positive, and all the items have been found, and they're usually found pretty quick, so we're hoping to make that kind of a appointment viewing for people to watch for that every Friday. But other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mike. Or Zach? Chief of Peace?
Of note, we got our official grant letter, open grant, I told you about the JAG grant, and we will be, we have to enter into a memorandum of understanding for our license plate reader system that we'll be implementing. We have new MDTs, which is our mobile data terminals for our police cars, they're coming, so we're replacing ones that are, they're upgradable, but if we upgrade those particular ones, they cause complications with our system, so it's a lot more work, and we're going to replace those. Still good, we hope to recycle them within the city system. There's been a number of IT challenges, we have an electrical storm, we've had to replace some equipment here. One positive thing we did, it's not off the ground just yet, but we have established a one gigabit internet service for the city system, which helps on both our download and upload speeds, these are the highest speeds that we can get with coax. And we've been involved in a number of conversations, including the one that Mike Webber and I were on, in regards to back production, more cares act funny in the next phase, and there's some positive momentum with maybe the firego project, which will enhance some of our capabilities as well, not just for the city, but this community overall as well. So a number of those kinds of things, I spent a number of hours today onto the spectrum, because there is a, there was an account issue, created two accounts, and we have to have static IPs and all this other business, and it took hours and hours and hours to deal with it, but they did try hard, and at the end of the day, sent a technician out, all in one day, so that went too bad. Good service, so. That's what we've been doing, busy people doing good things, and we'll have a pretty more thorough report on our K9 activity so far, been excellent, but we've also had a number of drug arrests unrelated to our K9 is going on, so we've been doing some pretty good work out there.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, who?
Nothing, Mr. Scott.
Jesse?
I got nothing to report on my part.
Players right there. They get it.
Thank you. Jeff, very sorry, you.
I got six things.
I'll bet you.
No. Speeding on 98th Street is still an issue. 98th River, they're speeding. What is our prosecutor's name?
Amy Mitchell.
Is she Wyandotte County?
No.
And is she on a contract, or?
She's contract.
For a time, for, can you tell me, or you can email it to me if you'd like, when that contract is up?
I don't know.
Right, I didn't think you had it on top of your head. So if you go to email it to me, that'd be fine. That's all I have.
Harvey?
All right, man.
Here it is.
Nothing.
Karen?
I'll be quick. I wanted to mention after the last meeting, Commissioner Burrows was in attendance, and I had mentioned that I had reached out to Harvester's and never got a phone call back. The day after our meeting, I got an email from Harvester's that said Commissioner Burrows had asked them to contact me to set up a mobile food delivery to Edwardville, and so I just wanted to thank him. I know he's not here tonight, but I emailed him to, and I just thought that was really neat, that he remembered something and brought it back and acted on it pretty quickly, so I wanted to take just a second for that. Health Department replied, Zach, was really great in getting back to us about what, the Health Department wasn't as great as being specific in what our goals are and what we're shooting for. They did respond that they wanted our positivity rate to be below 10%, and right now, our positivity rate is 17.6%. I just wanted to point out again, that is going to be really tricky when the majority of Wyandotte County is pushing testing for only symptomatic people, and then they're wanting less than 10% of those to be negative or positive. It just doesn't really seem reasonable, and so I hope that we just keep pushing back on that and focus more on hospitalization rates, because that was the goal, keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed. We've sat between Providence and KU at 25 people for the last two weeks, and some of those, it says might not even be Wyandotte County residents. So I think we're moving in the right direction and need to keep pushing for more freedom for individuals. And the last thing, second to last thing, bulky item pickup that we're going to have instead of the downtown, I was wondering if we could ask them, because I've had even more people ask me if, and if they don't have a couch to get rid of, but they're wanting to clean out their garage or clean out their basement, could we substitute one bulky item for maybe so many construction bags of things, or something like that, to help meet that need? And then I, last thing, I promise, is trunk or tree, are we doing that this year? Is that something we can?
We are doing something. It may not be the traditional where people are used to, but we've looked at a couple different concepts, and we will have some kind of event that we'll firm up probably here in the next week and a half, and get the word out about it.
Okay, and if I can be helpful in any way and find any great solutions, or if I just have something to look forward to?
Yeah, if you've got, if you've got ideas, we're, between myself, the office administrator, Heather, and Mike Martin, we've been kind of look and see what's out there, and spitballing ideas, and we'll put something together. So if you've got something in mind, or if you've seen a model out there, we are all ears.
True, thank you.
And I think Kevin Schreger's on that committee also.
On the CPPS board, that group is engaged in most of our community events, yes, sir.
It's the work I see up by Vicki's property, is that utility movement?
That is. AT&amp;T is in there doing their utility location. They're about the only... They're about the only people on that side of the road now. Pretty much all the other utilities are in there. Water will be the last.
The poles will move and everything?
Yes, those poles probably, those will be removed on that side, or about, if there'll be any poles in that section on that side of the road. The poles that are up for power, move back to roughly 50 feet from the center line of the road. They'll be behind the trees on the other side, so. Water will be the last thing, and they're, they're always the most problematic, because you've got to have a grave change before you change the water. I mean, it's one thing if it's five feet deep, you're going to have a foot on there, but we got some places where it's five feet deep, and we're going to cut eight, so, and it's hard to go in and do a little bit of water at the time. That'd probably be the last thing. We do have, and I'll be in our next meeting, clearing and grubbing, so to clear and grub all the, the trees out of there, will be at your next council meeting. So those bids open this week.
Okay, I have nothing further to add. Your turn.